Okay, we'll call to order the February 15th, 19th meeting of the town of Corder Madara, Town Council, regular meeting. We will start with roll call.
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Present.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Here.
Mayor Avasio.
Here. If you could all please join me with the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we'll start with open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the council regarding any item not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? If you could please come up to the microphone and introduce yourself. Again, this is for items not on the agenda.
Hi, my name is Frank Schultz. I am a resident of the town. I am also a walker, just like every other resident of the town here. So I'm here to talk just briefly on pedestrian safety. I walked here to this meeting. Do I think the town is doing a bad job? Not at all. When I came here, you have well-marked crosswalks. Some of them have the buttons that allow the crosswalk to light up, a very safe feature. I did recently see in the Twin Cities newspaper that the Central Marin Police Force recently conducted enforcement action ticketing drivers who had failed to yield right away to pedestrians. So, great efforts there. I just want to say, this Sunday, walking back from church of all places, just around the corner, thank God I had a sixth sense, driver wasn't going to stop, close call. So I'm just reminding you of the need to do additional work here and certainly recognize your very good efforts in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council about items not on the agenda? Okay, then we will move on to presentations. Item 3A, Central Marin Fire Authority Annual Report. Fire Chief Scott Schertz.
When I first started preparing for this, I thought maybe I would just do bullet points and, and talk to you, but I have decided to go with a little more discipline. I generally go long when I do that, and I was asked to keep it short. So if you'll bear with me, I'd like to general, just read through my comments and then I can answer any questions afterwards. So thanks for the opportunity to give a summary of the fire department's activities during 2018. We'll start with operations. Our men and women responded to more than 3,300 calls for service last year. Just under 2,000 of those calls were EMS-related, and the other 1,335 or so were fire or other, anything that was not EMS. We responded to 10 separate major incidents outside of our county and are in the process of collecting over $700,000 in compensation and reimbursement from the state and federal governments for our responses. We currently have several employees participating on regional special operations teams, such as urban search and rescue, fire and arson investigations, water rescue, the dive team, hazardous materials response, critical incident and major incident management teams. In public education, we had a very active year. Fire Prevention Week is in early October, and during this week, we visited 13 classrooms and 321 students in K through 2 to teach them basic childhood fire safety. We continue to host our annual open house at Station 14. We ramped up our support of the ever-growing Central Marin NRG program, which recently reached a membership of over 6,000 households. And I'd just like to take a second to acknowledge Lee and John Howard for putting the original NRG program together, and of course Lori Rice, for all the, and all the NRG leaders for the work they've done to further develop this amazing program throughout the Central Marin area. I really believe that this program, this local program, should become the model for community preparedness and resiliency. The ideas of family and property preparedness, collective neighborhood responsibility, neighbor helping neighbor, and most importantly, neighbor knowing neighbor, communicating, prioritizing, problem-solving together. The time to meet your neighbor is before an emergency, not during one, and this program is really helping accomplish that critical component in the preparedness game plan. While we're talking about emergency preparedness, the department organized and conducted a fairly large evacuation drill in May. Notices were sent to 623 residences in Chapman Park, and we had 112 residences participate, which is just about 18 percent, which may not sound like a lot, but in evacuation drill worlds, that's actually a really good participation rate, and that was the first organized evacuation drill that we had done, so we were happy with that. We tested and are still evaluating a long-range acoustical device as a potential option for mass notifications during an emergency. And our fire marshal conducted several community neighborhood walks to discuss how residents can create proper defensible space around their homes, and how to prepare and create an action plan in the event they are required to evacuate during a wildfire. One of our major goals in the coming years to encourage and assist neighborhoods with attaining NFPA Fire Wise recognition. Fire Wise presentations were given to a number of NRG neighborhoods, including Meadowcrest, Hidden Valley, Upper Madrone, Lower Madrone, Olive, and Blue Rock. Our vision is to have each NRG cluster become a Fire Wise neighborhood. Meadowcrest in Corder Madara recently became the first Fire Wise community in Corder Madara, and the application submittal just went in today for Hidden Valley. So that's pretty exciting. In terms of long-range planning, we've begun working with Todd Lando as a vegetation management specialist to assist us with creating additional Fire Wise neighborhoods. Todd has a wealth of experience with the Fire Wise program, vegetation management, and grant writing. And with Todd's assistance, we've applied for a $1 million grant through CalFire, which if successful, will be used for a fuels reduction project along the primary and secondary evacuation routes on Christmas Tree Hill and in Madrone Canyon. The grant will also be used to create a shaded fuel break stretching several miles between the watershed lands and the communities of Corder Madara and Larkspur. Administratively, we recently launched our new website, centralmarinfire.org, and we just opened a new recruitment for firefighter paramedic, which we plan to use to fill a vacancy that was created due to her retirement last April. Working together with our neighbors has been a real priority for us. Combining the fire departments of Larkspur and Corder Madara has been a huge success from any vantage point. The consolidation has increased our efficiency, personnel depth, and our command and control capabilities. And while we're thrilled with the success of the new organization, we're definitely not done looking for opportunities to enhance our operation or squeeze out some additional efficiencies. In November, we implemented a shared services agreement with the Kentfield Fire Protection District. And there are quite a few components to this new arrangement, but the highlights are that we are sharing our fire marshal and two battalion chiefs with Kentfield, and they are sharing their fire inspector and one battalion chief with us. In addition, we now have the ability to utilize staffing from either agency to fill mandatory staffing assignments, which really increases our flexibility and goes a long way toward maintaining a positive morale. And the best part is that as a direct result of the efficiencies gained through this new partnership with Kentfield, we'll finally be able to hire three additional firefighter paramedics in order to achieve the three-person minimum staffing on each fire engine in our response district. And this has been a longstanding goal of ours, and we're just thrilled to accomplish it through the magic of quality partnerships and creative problem solving. And if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions? Excellent, Chief, as usual. The three, staffing of three, is that for Station 15 in Larkspur?
15, that's correct.
Which also serves Christmas Tree Hill.
Correct.
Thank you. And the Kentfield arrangement, would you say this is similar to what we were doing with Larkspur eight or 10 years ago?
Uh, no. Not, not exactly, no.
Is Kentfield a one engine, or one?
One station.
One station.
Yes, yes. And so what we were able to do with Kentfield was utilize our staffing so that we're not duplicating efforts. We grew our battalion a little bit to include all of the Kentfield district, so our response area increased a little bit for command and control perspective. And then instead of us having all three battalion chiefs from our organization, we now utilize one of theirs.
Okay, creative. Any other questions? How many other battalion chiefs does Kentfield have?
They just have the one.
Okay.
That's why it works out really well for both, for both of us.
All right.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chief. About the evacuation drill, so is it correct that the evacuation drill for Chapman Park was the, the first of its kind?
Not anywhere.
Well, not anywhere, but here.
It was the first that we have organized recently.
Yeah, okay, so is that going to become a routine thing?
Yes.
And are we going to do those in other neighborhoods as well, like Christmas Tree Hill?
We plan to do at least one, good-sized one, per year, probably more.
Great.
So yeah.
That's fantastic, and I was very happy to hear that you guys were able to reach that three crew per engine.
Yeah.
Standard finally, because I know that you guys have been working on that for a long time.
It's huge.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Another, just a matter of curiosity, indicated that we delivered services in 10 fires outside of our county.
Yes.
And I, obviously that's a heroic effort. What actually happens in that circumstance? If we are, are, are those personnel paid right away, and then the town kind of has a deficit, and we're looking to fill that back, back in with state and federal monies?
Correct.
Should they arrive?
We, we, we plan on that because it has become very regular and routine each fire season. We routinely go out of the county many times, and so we are reimbursed in full. We don't lose a nickel by responding, and we gain some very valuable experience, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bob, just one thing.
Yes, sir.
Chief, thank you for your presentation. I wanted to compliment you. I go attend these Ross Valley Paramedic Authority meetings for the town for the last year or so. You were consistently professional, informed, you work in a cooperative way with the other chiefs. It's really one of the highest compliments I can give you, that the service you give to the town is of the very highest order. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Can I ask one more?
Yeah.
Thanks. Chief, would you mind telling us a little bit more about this fire break? Did you say shaded fire break?
A shaded fuel break is the industry term. So what that means is instead of what we typically think of as a traditional fuel break is mineral earth, we call it, just dirt, right? Nothing flammable. So a shaded fuel break, that's, that's an extreme example, and it's very effective, but oftentimes, communities don't appreciate having, you know, hundreds of yards wide of just dirt through their communities. So what's becoming very popular in the prevention world is the shaded fuel break, which is, the way it's described is a park-like setting. So that's the removal of all grasses and brush, and you'll still have oaks and, and, you know, different types of conifers, but, but it's a park-like setting. There's not those ladder fuels, is what we talk about, getting the, the flashy fires up into the crowns.
That's great.
And so that gives firefighting resources an opportunity to make a stand, and, and fire generally slows down when it hits a shaded fuel break like that.
And you said several hundred yards is generally the depth of these?
Well, if you're, if you're trying to create a fire break that would slow down a fire moving from the watershed into a community, you would want it to be quite wide. Nothing is going to stop a fire, such as we saw up in the North Bay, but we're in the business of trying to prevent the, the other 99 percent of fires that we can control, so.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Chief, thank you so much for your service and your terrific work. Really appreciate it. Thank you. We now move on to the report from Central Marin Police Authority by Chief Mike Norton.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for having me tonight. I'm going to do something a little different this year. In the years past, you know, we've talked about, thank you, just kind of a yearly rundown, and I'll be back in April to go over crime stats and traffic stats from this year. But one thing I wanted to share with you, and I think maybe sometimes I've heard at least one of you have been asked this, is I don't see the police as much as I used to, or it seems like there used to be more traffic enforcement, kind of what's going on? What's changed? What's going on there? So I wanted to take a few minutes, feel free to interrupt me at any time, but to just kind of answer, where are the police? I know, it's kind of funny, but you'll see. So what do we do? A lot of people think we just, hey, there's not a lot of crime, all you do is traffic enforcement, why can't you go work this stop sign off in my town? Here's kind of the priorities, the priorities of us. Number one, you call 911, we will come, we will come quickly. We also respond to cold crimes. That's if your car got broken into the night before, or you were at the shopping center and your car gets stolen, something like that. Those are cold crimes. Number three, we spend a lot of time on this, in all three jurisdictions, are what we call quality of life calls. That's, I'm, I'm in a disagreement with my neighbor because he's putting in a new fence, and I think it's too high, or things like that. Leaf blower, noisy leaf blowers, there's dogs in the park, there's dogs off-leash, could be anything, but those account for a ton of it. Between all of that, in our three towns, we get about 40,000 calls for service a year. I think in Corder Madara, it's probably about 10,000 to 12,000, somewhere in that range. When we're not dealing with those three things, which we always get to, sometimes we get queued up, our officers are just running call to call to call, that's when we have time to go do traffic enforcement, and that's when we have time to do what we call general patrol, which is to drive around the shopping centers, some of our areas that are experiencing crime issues, and try and prevent some of that. And when it comes to traffic, we get, you know, non-stop requests to work traffic, you know, you know, if you just sat in front of my house, or if you just sat in front of this house, that's where it's all going on. Well, there's, there's problems all over with traffic enforcement. How we prioritize it, number one is prior accident locations. So that's where we know we're having accidents. And that varies all over, but that's usually your main corridors. And then number two is locations where we feel that bicycles and pedestrians are most likely to get struck or at risk. That's part of the reason we do a lot of enforcement on Tamil pious at the crosswalks. We always have, we probably always will for a while, even with the enhancements, which are great, it's still an issue, and we realize that. And number three, high-traffic corridors, that might be speeding on Paradise or something like that. And finally, time willing, we go up to remote residential areas, and that's kind of that, that stop sign that's off the main drag over by a house where everyone says they're rolling through, and I almost got struck the other day, things like that. So that's kind of what our officers do on a daily basis. And then I get asked, well, how many officers do you exactly have? I get asked this a lot. We have, between San Onselmo, Larkspur, and Corder Madara, a population of 35,000 that live in town. That's not counting our daytime population, which is obviously much higher with the shopping centers and businesses. We are budgeted for 30 patrol officers, 42 officers in all, but when you take myself out of the equation, our detectives or other administrators, that leaves us with 30 patrol officers. We have to work, obviously, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and our shifts are broken into two day shifts, with each one having seven officers assigned to them, and two night shifts, with each one having six officers assigned to them. And then we also have four assigned to a traffic division. So when we're fully staffed, and I don't have anyone at the academy, anyone who's injured at this given time, or anyone on training, I have 30 patrol officers available. In the last two and a half years, we've averaged being down anywhere from five to eight of those 30 at any given time due to injuries, being at the academy or something else. So realistically, we're working usually with not 30, but more like 22 or 24. And that's kind of been a challenge for us the last two and a half years. So part of the reason that we're short a lot is there's staffing shortages, and there's realities too. And it's a nationwide problem, a California problem, and it's a Marin problem. Nationally, what we're finding, and you can Google this, there's articles from all over the country, the, you know, the northeast, the south, California, is fewer and fewer people are wanting to go into police work over the last couple of years with the national story around policing. It's not what it used to be. It has a bit of a taint to it, and we just find more and more young people are not interested in becoming police officers. We also have a very robust economy, which is great, but you can essentially make more money in the private sector than you can becoming a, a public servant right now. That being said, is we usually have our, our most applications and stuff when there is a recession, because you gotta have police. We're still hiring and things like that. In Marin specifically, what we've been challenging is, no surprises, it's the cost of living. I think the median home price in Marin's about a million dollars right now. Most of my officers, I live in Petaluma, and when I first started 18 years ago, I was one of the farthest ones away, and now I'm one of the closest. So I have officers that live in Vacaville, Fairfield, very few can even afford Sonoma County at this point, so they have really atrocious commutes. The pay is good, for the most part, but it's comparable to everywhere around the bay. So you can essentially, if you live in Fairfield or Vacaville, you can go work for one of those agencies and essentially do the same job, have no commute, and, and make roughly the same, the same living. So that's what we're struggling with, with attracting people down here. And like I said, the last two years, we've been down an average of five to seven officers at a time. Our spots are filled, but they're at the academy, which takes about six months. Once they graduate from the academy, they start a field training program, that's another five months, and after about a year total, then we see them on the street, and they're able to drive around and help everybody out. So the reality is, for the last two and a half years, we haven't had a traffic division. Our traffic division's been going around and answering 911 calls and doing all of that, because we've been down so many people. So then there's the issue, I get asked this a lot too, what do we pay for police? And this is just, you know, take it for what it's worth, and this is good news for the town, but currently, it's $355 per resident, which is about $3.5 million per year. That's Corder Madara's share of the police budget. It's gone up. You can see in 2008, 2009, it was $321 per resident, so it's gone up about 1% a year, which is pretty low. If you want to see some comparison, I won't go through them all, but that's when I did the survey in 1617, you can see how Corder Madara, what, what you pay for police compares to other jurisdictions. It's significantly smaller, and, you know, I'm not here lobbying for more money, but, you know, it's just a slight increase per resident would probably help us out a lot with our staffing. And then the big thing with traffic, and I always say this, is, you know, traffic, I work with, I think I saw Peter come in here somewhere, there he is, there's the director of Public Works. We work closely with Peter when we have problems. And just the other day, during our pedestrian sting, we actually realized after doing a sting at one intersection, that cars were able to park up pretty close to the crosswalk, and it was creating some line of sight. Quick telephone call, and I believe you went out even that day and painted it red, and we improved the safety. Just little things like that are huge. So I know Peter's always working hard to improve the conditions and put in traffic calming to slow people down. We're out doing the best we can with enforcement, but the number one thing is, if you think about it, no one ever thinks about this, is if, it's really everyone who lives in town and drives through it, right? If no one was in such a hurry, and no one sped, which really doesn't get you any better, let's be honest, with traffic the way it is, we wouldn't even have to do enforcement. And, I mean, it's kind of a pie in the sky view, but what we notice a lot, and it's not just Corder Madara, it's in all, or all three towns, is kind of the attitudes of residents towards one another seem to be getting worse and worse. We see a lot of rudeness, a lot of entitlement, and it's funny, because we'll see people complaining about someone speeding down their street in front of their house where their kids are playing, and they get upset. I would too. But then that same person will put their kids in the car and drive to school and speed right down in front of someone else's house. It's, everyone needs to start really getting along better. And I don't see this as much in Corder Madara as some of our other towns, but if people have traffic issues or concerns, they're always free to reach out to just, to the police department. They don't need to reach out to the mayor, they don't need to reach out to a council member, or the town manager, that's what we're here for, and, and we'll do the best we can with it. Even less constructive is when people just post things on social media. It's kind of like they throw their arms up, say their piece on social media, and then complain later when it's not corrected, but we're not monitoring all of social media. We don't know what's really going on unless someone tells us. And we have set up, obviously you can call our number at any times, but we have set up a new email hotline that we've been having some good luck with, and we pushed it out on our social media, called trafficconcern@centralmarinpolice.org. We've gotten all sorts of things on this, but for the most part, it's great, because I feel it gives people a chance to kind of get what off their chest, what their concerns are, where they'd like to see more enforcement. It gives us a chance to actually reply to them and explain a little bit about us and how we prioritize things, but we think that's been good. Another thing we want to do is just increase education through social media, because it's hard to educate people one by one, but every month, we'll be putting something out, just, it's going to vary, it could be about distracted driving, pedestrians, just some general things to have people keep in mind. But just in closing, I'll show you, we'll have the statistics in April, but you'll see, your officers are very busy. Crime and accidents are comparatively low to other jurisdictions. We are seeing a spike right now with auto burglaries. That's county-wide and Bay Area-wide, but comparatively, it's, it's still a good place to live. Crime is low. Our staffing is very, is limited by very real town budgetary constraints and staffing issues. And finally, I think traffic conditions are just going to have to improve through enforcement, but really through education, and more importantly, increase civility by citizens towards one another. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Yes, Eli.
Thanks. Thank you, Chief Norton. One question, has the CNPA considered, or is there a budget for any sort of public outreach like campaign to try and get people to behave better and drive better?
We, we have done things like citizens academies, where we've brought people in, and they've kind of become our ambassadors and things like that. We are pretty, we do post a lot on Nextdoor and Nixle and things like that, and we have held, like in San Onselmo, we did a town hall, but it was really more just going over what we just went over. But yeah, it's, it's, it's a challenge. I don't really know, we're kind of focused, we're kind of to the point where we're, what we find is everyone kind of points each other, oh, it's the teenagers. Well, it's not. I mean, our statistics show it's usually the, the older generation is our number one violator. Our teenagers, for the most part, are actually some of our best drivers. But I think it starts young, and I think we have to get the next generation to really kind of call out their parents. I've seen my daughter do it, to my wife. Luckily, not to me. She's 14, and she'll call her out if she rolls through a stop sign or is going a little quick, and then she'll tell me about it. But, but honestly, that's, that's pretty eye-opening, you know, and we've had some frank discussions at home over that, like she's going to be driving in two years, you better, she's going to drive how, what she sees, she's going to model. And if we don't get to the, the younger people before they start driving, I think there's going to be a lot of that same emotions.
Right. I wonder, like, I don't know if you guys have considered, like, boosted social media posts or anything like that, to just try and sort of use smaller-scale advertising methods to get to where it, like, I feel like every other meeting, we're authorizing signs for various events and causes around town. I feel like we'd probably be happy to put up signs in Corder Madara for a month that say something about, watch how you're driving.
I'm not sure if Corder Madara participates in it. Do you know there are just Street Smarts still? So Street Smarts is kind of like that, and there's some other groups too. I, you know, it's, everyone, everyone, all those signs hit different, you know, notes with different people, but I always liked the one, you know, drive like your, your kid lives here, or drive like you play here, because all of us either have had kids or were kids or whatever, but I think that really drives it home. I think people just kind of get stuck in their own world and, and really don't care about other people as much as they should be, unfortunately. And we, we do a lot of enforcement, but it's just, you know, it's just a drop in the bucket compared to everything we're seeing.
Thank you.
Sure. Yes?
Do you do any presentations over at, say, Hall Middle School, or Cove, or Neil Commons, so that the kids know what to call on their parents?
We haven't done that. We kind of are invite-only when it comes to schools. Whenever they reach out to us, we're more than happy to come. We did just put on, and we have another one coming up, it's called, God, what is it called? We sponsored with CHP to do it. CHP puts it on, but we brought them into town. We did one in San Onselmo, and we're doing one at our station, kind of to hit Drake and Sir Francis Drake, and it's kind of a teen driving class, and you have to attend with a parent. And it's kind of a tricky way of teaching the parents as well as the teenagers, but we're. And it's kind of a tricky way of teaching the parents as well as the teenagers, but we're, we actually, those are both sold out already, they sold out quickly, so we're gonna do some more of that, because there does definitely seem to be a desire for some more of that.
Questions?
Chief Norton, thank you for your presentation. You're correct that we do receive a lot of complaints from our beloved citizens about every imaginable thing, but for your information, I have not received any complaints about the police in memory. And that is the sort of thing which I need reminding sometimes, something to be grateful to you and you're forced for, because that's an easy thing for people to complain bitterly about, and you are doing an outstanding job when you have not, it has not even risen to the level of an email to me, so nice work.
Well, that's good. Sometimes I mix the towns together into one batch, because I don't, I don't really think of, I'm gonna police this town, I'm gonna police this town.
Well, here in Corder Madera, we love you.
You can, you can cancel out some of the negative stuff I got, so I appreciate that.
My, our firstborn son's, now thirty-four-year-old son's first full sentence was from the backseat, "I want to drive." Maybe a float in the Fourth of July parade with a particularly smushed car saying...
That sounds pretty depressing.
That was something that was done in my hometown, and it called, it made us youngsters a little bit more aware of the possible effects of our drag racing.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, honestly, it's, we get a little bit with the teenagers, but, you know, when I started eighteen years ago, it was a lot more enforcement was necessary for the teenagers and a little less. And I don't know if it's smartphones and distracted driving or what it is, but it's really kind of over fifty, you know, is when we see a lot of it. We see a lot of, those are the people blowing through the crosswalks when someone's trying to cross, that's a lot of the speeding, that's a lot of the distracted driving. I don't know the reason behind it, we're just seeing that more and more and more.
Anything else? Chief, thank you so much for your report and your time and your work, really appreciate it. Next up is the consent calendar, the purpose of which is to group items together which are routine, pardon?
We had open time yet?
Yeah. Which are routine, have been discussed previously, do not require further discussion, they're approved by a single motion. Any member of the council, staff, or the public may request removal of an item for discussion. I will now entertain a possible motion, or is there anyone who wants to remove an item? Is someone who wants to remove an item?
Yeah, I want to remove four B and four E.
Four B and four E.
I'll give you a motion when you're ready.
So do we go ahead and approve and then come back to the items that were pulled? Okay.
I'll move that we approve items four A, C, and D, right?
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor of Azio?
Yes. Okay, let's come back, you wanna try to get through four B and E?
Yeah, my only question is, is on page eight.
Is it item four B?
Yes, four B. It's number ten, repurchase agreements.
Page eight?
No, page eight where it's...
Five pages.
Okay, then it would be page four.
Right, so it's, he's pointing to on page four, highlighted number ten.
Right.
Repurchase agreements?
I think, given the type of, the broad scope of investments authorized, I think marking it the market quarterly is insufficient. So I think we either need to narrow the scope of the investments, or better yet, say it's treasuries and you market the market monthly, okay? Part of the problem that we ran into in two thousand and eight is, a lot of repos blew up, not because the collateral was bad, it was just that the valuations were so volatile, you couldn't market the market and make certain that you're a hundred percent collateralized, okay?
So this sounds like it might be kind of a significant rewrite potentially on this one. Todd, is that, should we bring this back?
Yeah.
I think, though, we need, we need to improve, just thinking from a timing standpoint. I'm wondering if we ask council to consider approving this now? If it, I'm just wondering from a timing standpoint, Todd is not here, that we need to approve our investment policy, but to take this to the finance committee, we meet in March, we'll add it to our agenda and get some feedback and bring this amended investment policy back to the council after that meeting?
Am I correct in thinking that we haven't done a repo in generations?
That's correct.
Okay.
But whatever, but my thought would be to run it through the finance committee and come back to council. But in the meantime, again...
Does it work for you? Yes.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve four B as presented.
I must move? I move it.
You'll move?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor of Azio?
Yes. And then four E, the meeting minutes?
Yeah, page thirty-eight, line thirty-three, make trial, make it trial instead of trail.
Page seven.
Okay.
Line thirty-three.
And then...
Oh, yeah. You're right.
Okay.
Wow, that's a good case, he reads his notes careful, wow.
Page, I guess it's eleven, line twenty-five, can we delete restroom? Because I didn't really care where they went to the bathroom, I was worried about where they were gonna sit.
How does that leave the rest of the sentence, please? How does the rest of the sentence read without that?
Where the facilities will be located for the engineering...
So the new sentence would read, Vice Mayor Andrews questioned where the facilities will be located for Engineering Division. It used to say where the restroom facilities, I think that's the change you're proposing.
Yes.
So deleting the word restroom from line twenty-five.
Are there any other changes, or?
And then line twenty-eight, are we moving the maintenance team out of the firehouse or engineering?
Jim, you are on it!
Yeah, really? Wow.
All right, so it's...
John, you're the lawyer, aren't you supposed to be...
I am frankly impressed, Jim is impressing the hell out of me here.
Okay, so, there you go. Good.
So, is that it?
Yeah, and I'd like to move, what is this, four E?
Yep.
Yeah, as amended?
Yes, as amended.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor of Azio?
Yes. Okay, so now we're moving on to item five A, public hearing to consider, I'm gonna read the whole thing. Introduction of ordinance number ninety-three, an ordinance of the town council to amend Corder Madera municipal code Title V business licenses and regulations to add tobacco retailer licensing requirement, prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products, and prohibit pharmacies from engaging in tobacco retailing, and two, determining that the adoption of the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. We have a report from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before I turn this over to Rebecca Von, I wanted to first acknowledge and take credit for the town of Corder Madera receiving a C grade for the American Lung Association. I am partially responsible for that, and I apologize, but I do want to say it's not, for lack of being concerned about the issue, in the prior, my prior life in law enforcement, I'll tell you that it was really shocking from the tobacco retailers of how they advertised these products for the youth, and it's a prevalent problem in our area, and as well as at our schools, and I think there's a lot of people here in the room that will attest to that shortly. So really, I want to turn this over to Rebecca. The council, the mayor, and I think every council member has asked me about this topic over the last six months, and so publicly, I want to acknowledge that, so people know that this is a concern of the council. One of the things that sometimes slows our process, not an excuse, but it's important that if we can, on ordinances like this, to be as streamlined as possible with our partners in Larkspur as well as San Onofre. And so I'll tell you that San Onofre has reviewed this as a discussion topic last week. Larkspur will follow both, both of our towns in the coming month or so. So I think we're there, we're in a place to be consistent with what we do to assist our local law enforcement. I also want to just share that on the fiscal analysis, and Rebecca will touch on it, there really is a minor fiscal impact to the town by enacting this ordinance. There are enforcement practices covered by the county as well as two grants, a county grant from the Marin County Sheriff's Office, as well as our Central Marin Police Authority to do special operations in the coming three years. And so we have good funding, we have good support, so there are really no concerns from staff on the fiscal impact of enacting an ordinance such as this. And with that, I'm happy to turn it over to Rebecca.
And our options tonight are to waive the first reading, introduce the ordinance, or propose modifications, or do nothing. So, just wanted to clarify that.
That's correct, thank you. Mayor of Azio and councilmembers, before I start off, I just wanted to point out that it was brought to my attention that there are two spots in the proposed draft ordinance where it references the prior minimum age of eighteen, that would need to be changed to twenty-one. And that arose from the fact that this was a model ordinance that others had used, and the minimum age recently had changed, so we need to reflect that in our own ordinance. I just wanted to start off by saying that tobacco retailer license programs are not a new idea in this county. Several cities have already enacted it, but the county was working hand in hand with a lot of these cities and other cities that hadn't enacted an ordinance yet, to boost that by introducing a component of banning of flavored tobacco products, and also the component that would prohibit pharmacies from selling tobacco products. So our draft ordinance as presented hits all three of that three-pronged approach of the implementation of the tobacco retailer licensing program, the prohibition of the sales of flavored tobacco products in all forms, and the prohibition of pharmacies from engaging in tobacco retailing. Let's see, first of all, the tobacco retailer licensing program would work in conjunction with our annual business license renewals, and that business license renewals in our town are sent out just after Thanksgiving of each year, and then they go into effect in January. So that is why we're recommending an enforcement date of January first, 2020, so that we wouldn't have mid-year applications, and it would be easy for our staff to just amend the existing business license application to add the tobacco retailer license checkbox, which would increase the business license renewal fee for fifty dollars per each store that sells tobacco products. The prohibition of the sale of flavored tobacco products would prohibit the sale of all flavored tobacco products within the town, including flavored nicotine, e-cigarette solutions, and flavored traditional tobacco products such as menthol cigarettes, and this would help address the vaping product, the vaping problem that a lot of our schools are experiencing with, in the high schools and junior highs, and we can speak more about that later.
What's our initiation date on that particular item, please?
The initiation date of, or the enforcement date of all three components would be January first, 2020, for ease of enforcement and public outreach and education. The town council can also review this section and provide direction to staff regarding the breadth of the flavored tobacco pan. I did point out that the city of Novato prohibited fruit flavors and other flavors that weren't menthol, mint, or wintergreen, and allowed those items to continue being sold in their town limits. Sausalito recently adopted a broader flavored tobacco ban approach that included fruit and candy flavors, and also mint, menthol, and wintergreen flavors, and we, staff is recommending the more broad ban route. Regarding the prohibition of pharmacies for engaging in tobacco retailing products, again, that would also be enforced beginning January first, 2020. We have one pharmacy in town, and that's the Rite Aid Pharmacy. All CVS pharmacy locations have been tobacco-free since late 2014, and the city of San Francisco prohibited pharmacies from selling tobacco products approximately ten years ago. So Rite Aid, as a corporation, is aware of the ban. I haven't heard comment from them regarding the proposal of our pharmacy ban, but I did drop off a letter last Tuesday at Rite Aid, and as well as the other six locations that retail tobacco products in town. And then I followed up on Friday afternoon with a copy of our report, and I was also able to email it to those retailers that I had received email contact information for. I didn't necessarily hear back from any of them, but some of them indicated they may be here this evening to provide public comment. I did also want to add that you did receive a public comment letter from, I'm probably going to get this name wrong, but the Petroleum and Convenience Stores Association, where they stated that the town of Corder Madera had a perfect record of compliance with not selling tobacco products to minors, but when I checked with the county and the San Antonio Police Authority, I was informed that on three occasions within the last nine months, they had issued citations, two for the seventy-sixth station on Tamalpais, and one just this past weekend for the Colonial Liquors across the street. So the police chief did say that the town of Corder Madera's tobacco retailers did have the poorest compliance of the three cities.
Could you repeat that, please?
The poorest level of compliance, when they do their stings or their operations to have youth attempt to purchase tobacco products, three times in the last nine months, the youth was successful in obtaining the product.
So we're number one.
Number one is something.
Yes, but it did point out that it is an opportunity to educate the clerks and talk about examining IDs more closely, the youth go in with their actual ID that indicates whatever age they are. So it's not that they're using fake IDs, it's their own personal IDs, and it's just, it's an opportunity for the police department to educate staff on compliance and what the law is, and how to better uphold those practices. I think that hits the high notes. I did, let's see, I covered the enforcement date. Page, page sixteen indicates what the first, second, third, fourth, and fifth violations would cause. This tobacco retailer license gives enforcement capabilities, whereas otherwise you wouldn't be able to enforce the laws, and the state laws and federal laws aren't easily enforced without the local level enforcement. So with the tobacco retailer license, you have the teeth to, say, after the second violation, you can suspend sales of tobacco products at the retailer for thirty days, and then the suspension increases from there with each violation within a five-year period. I think it might be best if I take some questions now, but I think I covered all of the high notes of the legislation.
Rebecca, thank you very much. Todd, any questions? Two, please, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Rebecca. I think we should, if you could point out exactly where the ordinance, the draft ordinance has the wrong age numbers. I've just been going through it while we were having the presentation, I found a bunch of cases in a bunch of different ages. I'm wondering if you already know offhand which ones are right?
Yes. The second page of the ordinance, page, it looks like page eight according to me, it was the third whereas clause from the top.
It should be twenty-one.
It should be twenty-one.
Okay.
And then the second one is under definitions, number five, or sorry, general requirements and prohibitions, five point oh six, point oh four oh, page twelve in my copy, the number five, minimum age for people selling tobacco.
Got it.
No person who is younger than eighteen years of age shall engage in tobacco retailing, that needs to be changed to twenty-one as well.
Okay, and those are the only two?
Those are the only two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, two quick things. First of all, I...
First of all, I really appreciate Rebecca's putting on her running shoes and going out and visiting all these businesses and talking to people across town. I think that's an extremely useful thing to do, to have done with the business community. I know that Councilmember Beckman and I both mentioned this at the chamber board meeting, but it's much, much more important that you actually went out and saw all the folks, and I think that's really terrific. Second, I would just, of the several communications that we've received, one that surprised me a little bit and delighted me was the Marin County Pharmacists Association coming out strongly in favor of making pharmacies for health and tobacco-free. Thought that was interesting. Should we have some questions? How good a job you did. Is that a question now? Okay, that's good.
Yeah, two questions, if I may. The first, so on page three of the staff report, when we're, the first paragraph of item two, prohibition of the sale of flavored tobacco products, I was just curious about the exemption. So I see there are exemptions for cigars sold in packages of five or more, single cigars priced over $5, pipe tobacco, or chewing tobacco, et cetera. I was just curious what the basis of these particular exemptions is, as opposed, like, why are they exempted?
Okay, first, let me start off by saying we do have Bob Curry from the Tobacco Related Disease Control Program at the county in the audience this evening, so he may be able to speak to this if I am off-base. But is my understanding that the purpose of that is that youth are very price-sensitive? And that they may try to obtain cheaper tobacco products, but the higher-end, higher-cost products aren't as much of a draw for youth? And the purpose, the primary purpose of this is to keep tobacco products out of the hands of youth?
Right. Five bucks doesn't seem like it's such a, maybe not the most effective price barrier.
You can discuss the prices.
They must be employed. Marin kid.
Right. Okay, and then my...
We could also research other ordinances and see if they have different price points.
Sure, yeah, I think that might be useful. And then my one other question is, the CFCA, what was it, like the California Fuel and Convenience Association or something, in their, in their letter voicing their opposition to this, they did raise a point that I found interesting, which is that apparently kids can order, you know, vape juice, liquid, liquid, like a nicotine solution online without having to actually verify their ages. And that just struck me as insane, that that, I mean, I was, my thought was like, can they actually do that? That just seems crazy. So I was just, I guess, curious if there's anything that we can do about that.
You know, I was just asked about that before the meeting started, and I was going to go online and see if that was something that I could order, because I didn't know about that either, but I hadn't had the opportunity to do that yet.
But we are basically eliminating the sales of most vaping products with this ordinance if it were to pass, is that correct?
Well, in brick and mortar.
Yes, right, right.
Right.
Yes, that is, the purpose of the ordinance was to limit the local availability to youth. And that just opens the larger public health question and discussion of a wider availability of the product. But having it not available locally, the intent is to reduce, reduce use. I can't, you can't completely count on eliminating it with the online retail component, but locally it wouldn't be available.
It would still be available at stores that aren't selling menthol, that aren't pharmacies. You could buy tobacco products, but there are limitations on youth making those purchases. So it doesn't eliminate all brick and mortar ability to sell all vaping products.
Just flavored.
But it's just flavored ones?
Flavored and not at a pharmacy.
Which are the majority.
And not to youth in any event.
Okay.
But I did also want to point out that several retailers did say they were making concerted effort to not order the coveted fruit flavors. They may stock regular e-cigarette, nicotine, and menthol, but not the flavors. So it was, it was good to see that that wasn't as widely available at a lot of the places I visited.
Jim?
Yeah, item 10 on page 11, where it defines proprietor. Then I go back and look at attachment two, where I have the matrix of retailers. Chevron, if they changed out the gas station manager, then be a change of proprietors. Okay, same thing with the, I'm assuming the Unical, I'm going on the assumption that that's a franchise, but I don't know that. The QuickServe, I don't know. I guess really what I'm, where I'm heading is, is the proprietor the owner or the manager? Because if it's the manager and you're changing out managers, then that's 50 bucks, you know, every time you replace the manager. So how are we differentiating those two?
The definition refers to either, so we need to, Rebecca, perhaps you can help me locate where the proprietor is in the operative provision. Not in the definitions, but in the operative provision.
I think it's when you have to pay a fee, when you change a proprietor, you have to re-license, which I believe every time you do a license, you do 50 bucks. And so, what?
Change in ownership, there wouldn't be a change in the manager.
Where are the, where is the $50 provision?
Well, that's just how much the license would cost.
Renewal.
Saying that you, we can fix the problem here.
A new tobacco retailer's license is required whenever a tobacco retail location has a change in proprietors. That's 5.06.080. And I'm thinking of, if you happen to have one of these stores that's sort of family-run and, you know, they hire somebody, he doesn't work out as manager, so you bring in a brother or a cousin.
We can change that, if you like, to owner.
So, yeah, I'm seeing on pages, the end of page 16 and the beginning of page 17, under tobacco retailing without a valid license, that's section 5.06.130. It looks to me like the, the sort of violation count only resets if there's a change in ownership.
Right.
As opposed to a change in proprietorship.
Right, right, but I'm just worried about having to shell out for a new license every time you change proprietor, because that's what I saw on page.
Oh, I see, sorry.
You know, it's on, it's 5.06.080, transfer restrictions.
We could just change that a new license is anytime there's a change in owner rather than proprietor.
But that doesn't help us with who's controlling the big store, you know, the, you know, the Chevron station.
So you want a, the franchise owner in that case? Is that what you're, is that what you're referring to?
It's franchise unless it's company-owned, and I'm just unclear as to how we can sort of finesse that.
So what I would suggest is we could bring this one back with some suggestions, but what you're, what you would hope to accomplish here would be owner or franchise owner, depending on, you know, when you're talking about a place like Chevron, it would be more of a franchise owner. When you're talking in other places where it's not a franchise, it would just be the owner.
Right.
We could say, we could go ahead and bring that one back to you if you want to move forward with other suggestions that you might have here. We could bring it back.
The other thing is if it's, if the franchise or business is, you know, sort of funded by a half a dozen family members, all chipping in money, it's very possible that one or two of them will be over 10%. And I'm not certain how that would work.
We, you would have to make a decision about where the right tipping point is on that. And that may be something that we can work with the organization that did a draft on this to bring back a proposal and explain in the staff report what the various options were and why staff is making whatever recommendation. And then you'd be able to decide for yourself and maybe tweak that when we bring it back.
And I, if there's any way we could do a survey of local businesses, you know, there's seven businesses that are affected and just say, you know, we want to know who's sort of in charge of your facility, you know, how, you know, how do they do it? And if I'm sounding vague, it's because you can have an LP, you can LLC, you could just sort of have a family informal partnership.
Vice Mayor, I think we would know that through the business license. And so, and we do have multiple businesses that have multiple family members that have different percentages of ownership, and as long as it's in the family name, we would, that would be an annual business license, and we'd move on to the following year as a practice. I don't see it as a big issue, especially with what's in place right now.
All right. The proprietor would be, you know, the guy who's running it day-to-day. If you change somebody there, that, does that require a new business license or?
Right, it's ownership. So business license follow ownership. Managerial for our, for our stake, and we can clean up this language, but this is more of who we're going to deal with day-to-day, right? This is going to get cited.
Okay.
That's what, that's what we're going to work with, so, but we can, I think we can relatively clean this up easy for the next meeting.
Good enough.
Okay. Any other questions or?
Yeah, that's.
For staff? That's it?
That's it, yeah.
Then we will move on to public comment. If there's any member of the public who wishes to address this issue, now's the time for you to speak. If you can come up to the microphone and please provide your name and where you're from, that would be great. And you have three minutes ideally. Do you have a timer up there on the screen? Thank you so much.
My name's Dave Bonfilio. I'm a volunteer with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network and a commissioner on Marin First Five. I rise to urge you to pass this ordinance, and I want to talk specifically about the broad definition of flavored tobacco. So you've heard different things, different communities not including menthol, evergreen, and mint. Menthol cigarettes target African-American, Asian-American, LGBTQ, and low-income communities. They're already burdened by tobacco-related diseases, so I urge you to keep the broadest possible definition of flavored tobacco. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak? We got one back here.
Good evening, council members. My name is John Ma. I'm the chief of the Division of General and Acute Care Surgery at Marin General Hospital. I'm the immediate past president of the San Francisco Marin Medical Society, and have also served as the chair of the California and Western States Affiliate Task Force for the American Heart Association. I'm here to speak particularly on behalf of the San Francisco Marin Medical Society. You have their letter of support included, as well as with the American Heart Association, for this proposal to end the sale of flavored tobacco products in Corder Madera like these. The best way to prevent tobacco-related illnesses and death is to avoid nicotine in new users, or better yet, to fight big tobacco strategy for attracting and addicting our youth through flavors. Candy flavors like mint, menthol, cotton candy, gummy bears, strawberry and lemonade mask the harsh taste of tobacco. They're highly appealing to youth, and they introduce our youth to nicotine addiction with all the associated health harms. I urge you to protect the health, not only of the youth, but also of adults in Corder Madera by passing this comprehensive tobacco retail license, ending the sale of flavored tobacco products. This policy will drastically limit access to the products that are the tobacco industry's primary strategy for targeting and addicting new smokers. Thank you for your leadership on this important topic.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Ma, who apparently was taking care of me when I was in Marin General.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, doctor.
We will not hold that against you, doctor. We know you have, you are obliged by the Hippocratic Oath to help everybody, don't worry the ball.
Great job, my wife did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you remember him?
And thank the first two speakers for keeping it less than a minute and a half. That was amazing. Anybody else want to speak on this? Jazzy?
Can I have their extra time? Hi, my name's Jasmine Garrity. I'm here on behalf of the Coalition Connection and Smoke Free Marin. Can you, can you hear me? Is that, okay, good. I'm here on behalf of the Coalition Connection and Smoke Free Marin. The Coalition Connection was formerly the Twin Cities Coalition for Healthy Youth, which combined with the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative. And I'm here to just provide you with additional data in regards to this topic and as far as the youth concerns that we have. So the California Healthy Kids Survey recently came out, the 2017-2018 data, and it showed us that among ninth graders in the Tamm Unified High School District, 24% of ninth graders have used e-cigarettes in the past 30 days. For 11th graders, it goes up. It went up to 33% of 11th graders who had used in the past 30 days. In 2015-2016, it was at 4% for ninth graders and 13% for 11th graders. That means it has increased, it's increased by 30% in two years. So when we look at the difficulty of obtaining e-cigarettes, which was a question added to this previously done California Healthy Kids Survey, the difficulty of obtaining e-cigarettes for ninth graders, they said 84% said that it was fairly easy to very easy to obtain them. For 11th graders, they said it was 87%, fairly easy to very easy to obtain. So obviously, these products are really easy for these high schoolers to obtain, and that's for Tamm Unified High School District, which includes Redwood, which is the feeder high school for Corder Madera. For looking at Marin County, among past 30-day use of 11th graders, it was 28%. And Tamm Unified High School District, like I just said, it was 33%. So we're higher than the county, and we are higher than the state. The state reported 28, 20% of 11th graders who had used in the past 30 days. So I want to move to this box. So I work with youth and a lot of them...
Grab your microphone. Yeah.
Can I take this out?
Yeah.
Okay, so I work with youth, and a lot of them actually do some data collection. So in this box, it smells kind of bad, so forewarning, but what we have in here is students who have gone to different high schools around Marin County and actually collected e-cigarette tobacco waste in all the different high schools in the parking lots. So there's about seven high schools from Marin County, and I would like to pull out the Redwood High School one in particular, because it is so astounding the amount of tobacco waste that they had. This one is, I believe this one's the Redwood. Redwood High School, they've got a couple, we did a couple picking up at Redwood High School. And so, that's Sam Raffel. So at Redwood High School, these were...
I gotta ask you to wrap it up.
Okay, these ones are the Juul pots, and I'd like to point out that a lot of them are the menthol-flavored ones in particular, so it's just important to note that those are being found in the parking lots at the different high schools. And if you want to take a look at these, I'll pass them around, but they smell a little bit bad, so.
Thank you very much, Jazzy. Can I ask her a question? Sure.
Not knowing anything about the Jewels, it's, you know, my deprived childhood, is there any sort of serial number on the units so that you could trace?
So you can trace them? I don't believe they have a serial number. You have one back there, don't you?
Yeah.
No, there's no serial number on them, so you actually can't trace the unit, yeah.
Okay. You're going for the bullet. Anybody else who wishes to comment on this? Yes, please, if you, please come to the microphone if you wish to speak on this topic.
Hi, I'm here from Corder Madera as a small business owner, and I want to just say that I'm all for Corder Madera and supporting the youth, but I don't like us being blamed saying that the youth is, we're the reasons that the youth is getting this stuff. We're not the reason. We were just, you know, had a sting the last week. They come, I don't want to lose my business license over selling to a young guy, you know? We take checking IDs very seriously, and if you think that taking off menthol or making it non-flavored that the individual's going to stop smoking, I'm sorry, they're not going to stop smoking. $2... $2 tax just went up. More than enough reason for somebody to stop smoking. They don't stop smoking. If they're going to have just regular flavor, they're going to smoke the regular flavor.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this topic? Someone else? Okay.
Hi, Bob Curry, the Tobacco Program for Marin County. And I just want to say thank you to staff for putting the ordinance together. Excellent job. And that, I want to let you know that the, we at the Tobacco Program in Marin County are here to support in any way. And I also want to make one clarification on why Novato and Fairfax, we asked them not to include the menthol cigarettes in their ordinance, because at that time, San Francisco was going through a challenge by the tobacco industry. It was on the ballot. It was Prop E. You probably all have heard about it. And the board supervisors in San Francisco had passed a similar ordinance to this, banning all the menthol flavors in cigarettes. And because it was before the voters, we thought we better wait until we see what the end result of the vote was. And thankfully, the support in San Francisco was overwhelming. 68% of the residents in San Francisco supported the Prop E. And so we will, I won't be, but the Coalition will be going back to Novato and Fairfax and asking them to include the menthol cigarettes in their, their ordinance that they passed last year or the year before.
Thank you.
Could I ask, could I ask a question?
Uh, sure.
The county representative, Mr. Curry?
Sure.
Thank you very much for coming, by the way. How many other jurisdictions are taking measure on pharmacies, per se? Are there, are we alone in that, or is it, or Sausalito also had a list on that?
Sausalito, the county unincorporated, Novato, Fairfax.
And now, San Anselmo's considering?
And San Anselmo, last week, they left that in what they're considering to bring back as a first reading, yes.
Have any rejected that? Have any taken up the issue of whether or not to restrict pharmacies and then rejected it in, in Marin?
No council has. We did bring it to San Rafael maybe three or four years ago, and their business subcommittee decided not to bring it before the council. But apart from that, everybody that we have brought it to has, has put it in. And as Rebecca said, in San Francisco, they had this action about 10 years ago. Massachusetts, a few months ago, the entire state, they banned it for the entire state of Massachusetts. So no tobacco in pharmacies.
In New York City.
Thank you very much, and thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Larry Meredith. I'm the former director of Health and Human Services in Marin County. I want to applaud you for your taking this ordinance seriously and making Corte Madera a healthier place for everyone. I think the American Lung Association monitors this, and it's, it's really disturbing to see that there are still communities getting a C. You will move quickly to an A, and I, I again applaud that. It's not going to eliminate smoking for everyone because it, but the, the availability of tobacco products is the first cousin to use. And by restricting the use, you're, you're creating another barrier to help individuals. There are over 400,000 people a year die from their use of tobacco products. So the, the Big Tobacco needs to recruit 400,000 more users every year, plus a, a number that will die off during the year. And so that's what we're up against. The, the, where, where the, the, the stockholders trump Main Street in, in safe products, and safe and healthy products. So again, thank you for doing this and making Corte Madera a healthier place for all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment from the public? Okay, then we will close public comment, and we will bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion. If there's anybody who.
Can I just say thank you, Bob, for your leadership on this in years past and the similar and related. And I think that unfortunately, the very effective efforts of large companies selling creative flavors has taken off and created a mini epidemic in our high school and middle schools. And so we, this is a logical next step to things that you, you worked on a couple of years ago and commenced here. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And in interest of full disclosure, I'm the co-chair of the Coalition Connection, which Jazzy is an employee. And she spoke, and our mission is to reduce alcohol and drug and other substance use among youth. So I have been working on this, and actually, I asked to get this on the agenda because I thought it was important for us. I just had one other comment. First off, as, as we've heard, I think this is, obviously, this is a public health issue, but you heard her talk a little bit about Juul, which are the e-vaping devices. I don't know how much, who many people saw this, but in December, Philip Morris invested $12.8 billion in Juul for a 35% stake. Juul, which is the primary manufacturer of these, is now valued higher at $38 billion than Ford Motor Company. So this is big business, and this is a huge step we are taking to try to stop this from becoming more popular among youth if we move forward with this. So I am very much in favor of this, and, you know, would love to see this move forward this evening.
I think the managers and town clerks' efforts to coordinate with San Anselmo and Larkspur are terrific, and, and we really, I don't, I'd be interested to know, what are our steps? I mean, we're going to, let's say, give our advice today and then a pause so that we can make sure that the three jurisdictions are in alignment, so we have one central Marin police authority in effect overseeing the same set of rules across three?
I, I think our recommendation, our, I don't think, our recommendation is that you consider, just as we, we, we talk here, waive the first reading and move forward with this ordinance. I'm confident that both the other two jurisdictions will move forward as well. And really, at this point, if one of them didn't, I don't think it should stop us from doing what we think we should do at this point. I think we've gave, given everybody an opportunity to follow us as leaders. So that's my recommendation. I don't think we should wait for the other two jurisdictions.
Yes, sir, slow.
It's a question for the town attorney. We're making a couple of minor modifications, almost in the order of typographical in nature, like the, the dates have been modified, and I think there may be a slight modification in the definition. Does that inhibit us from going ahead and passing this today, or do we need to then bring it back, or how does that affect life?
The, the dates, the age, one, you can move forward with those amendments. If you are okay with moving forward simply with the amendment that we are changing in the provision we were talking about, where it said proprietor to owner, and you're comfortable with that without more, you can move forward today. If you want us to come back with sort of slicing more carefully what constitutes an owner and what percentage of ownership, we would need to bring it back one more time. So you'd be giving us that direction to go do that. We would bring it back, and you could introduce next time. And of course, it does take two readings. So it depends a little bit what, what your comfort level is with this.
Okay.
See, I don't, yeah, I'm not familiar with what other towns do in terms of defining ownership and so on. And I, if we're going to be working in parallel with them, or do we just take point and tell them to catch up?
Yeah, I really don't have any concerns over it. I think we just spell, we just, we take out the managerial part. It's, it's ownership.
Okay.
Just really simplify that. And I'm sure the town attorney can wordsmith that quickly. It's really an administrative function. I'm not concerned about it.
About the definition of the word proprietor? Yeah, no, I'm totally content to have her do that, too. My question is whether we need to have that wordsmithing concluded before we pass it tonight or not.
I think as long as you are comfortable in giving me the ability to change the concept of rather than proprietor to owner, then I can work with the clerk to do that.
Yeah, I'm totally comfortable with that. I would say, Jim, I'm also comfortable, I know you, maybe you're not, so it doesn't, it's not going to trouble me, with leaving the original language in there. You'll notice the last sentence of that definition on page 11 in the ordinance does provide guidance to what that term managerial interest is used as. And it's, I think, a little broader than the way you're interpreting it. I don't have any quibble with the idea of wanting to clarify language. The simpler, the better usually. My only issue is that I'd rather not wait and just do it tonight. If the only way that you'll go for it is to change it in the way that Teresa, that our town attorney has mentioned, then, then let's do that. But I'm, from my own perspective, guys, I'm okay with the originally drafted language.
I'd, I'd be more comfortable with ownership.
I, I think that the, if I, this was based on the model that we were provided. And I do think that the last sentence of the provision proprietor that Councilmember Bailey just pointed out gets at the issue that you were concerned about with franchise. If you do limited to owner.
My concern was that if you change manager, you're going to have to relisten, and that's another 50 bucks. As I read the, you know, whenever you change the proprietor, you relicense, okay?
Jim, I think that you're defining, you're equating the term manager to store manager.
Yes.
Whereas the definition itself clarifies someone who has ultimate control over the day-to-day operations, not daily control or person-on-site control or business control. It's ultimate control, which to me is an identifiable link to the term ownership. What it's meant to capture, the sorts of things that you were discussing, which is that ownership interests are not limited to corporations. They can be LLCs, LLPs, and so forth. And that sort of managerial interest, as you know, members of those entities are sometimes referred to as managers when they have a controlling interest. And a controlling interest is often defined as something that is significant or substantial in excess of 10%. So the, it's not intended to refer to the sort of store manager and that kind of thing. You know what I mean? On the other hand, if, if it is a family-owned business and multiple family members each own in excess of 10%, and one or more of those family members sells to another, that would be the sort of ownership change, which I think would justify the $50 fee. The other thing is a $50 fee just doesn't offend me, even if they get charged it every time that a family member transfers an ownership interest.
Well, I'm thinking more in terms of if you're a small business and you're reading this, at first reading, whenever you change your manager, which means, you know, you've hired somebody, he doesn't work out after three months.
No, but that's the distinction I'm making. It's not that sort of manager. I think you're equating manager to meaning a store manager or the superintendent on duty, if you will, the supervisor who is handling the cash register at the front of the booth for the day. That's not the same thing as a managerial interest, because a managerial interest is defined within the same statute as someone who has ultimate control over the day-to-day operations. That person who is assigned to be in charge of a specific shift, I suspect, would not be gifted with the kind of ultimate control that an owner has.
I think from sort of running a business, if you hire a manager for your store, then you, you, you know, he opens it, he closes it, or she closes it. He basically runs it, and then, you know, the owner would be sort of looking over his shoulders and following up. But in terms of, you know, day-to-day operations, it's the manager that, that would be running it.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't agree with that interpretation, but it doesn't trouble me greatly one way or the other.
Okay.
So you guys tell me, I'm okay with the, with the initial version. If you guys want to defer to wordsmithing it, then I think that we ought to delay, we ought to either make the change right now or delay it. That's all.
I'm, I'm okay with it. I think it makes sense and it's clear, but I don't want to
Yeah, I'm not, Jim, I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
Sometimes these language, especially if it's, the thing that Rebecca said that's queuing me a little bit, is it was from a model ordinance. Is that right?
It is the ordinance adopted by the city of Novato.
So, oh.
Also, the ordinance that San Anselmo is looking at, and the ordinance that Smoke Free Marin has, they, they took Novato's ordinance and based the ordinance that they are recommending that cities adopt on that. So it was.
And it's very similar to Sausalito.
And Sausalito as well, yeah.
But for a business license, let's say somebody, they switch managers.
Right.
We're not flagged. We don't, it's not one of our steps. That's, that's not, that's per our licensing, Lena and our business department, we would not require a business license by practice.
And you're the one who's going to be interpreting it.
Exactly. We would not overchange in managers. It would not happen. It does not happen.
Well, we're thinking about that. One of the other comments that we received, Mr. Mayor, from the business public was that it would be unfair to have instant application of these, elimination of, of things, because franchisees and other business members have stock that they've acquired, they, we should not be forcing them to throw it out. If the, really, the date or the month of enforcement here is January 2020, I think that's plenty of time to work out any inventory, and beyond that, it wouldn't be fresh anyway, so.
And that's something we, we thought about of, like, having some, giving it a little bit of time. I, I think back to this, this part, I do recommend that we take out on line one, section 10, after ownership, just delete or managerial interest in a business.
Oh, okay.
And then take out the last sentence.
Well, you mean just to make it quicker? The way to do it is to, not to take out that whole sentence, Todd, but to take out the words managerial interest.
That's correct.
So.
In a business.
Actually, just take out the word managerial, or managerial.
Ownership.
So it should read, it currently reads proprietor means a person with an ownership or managerial interest in a business. The way to modify that, I think, is to say proprietor means a person with an ownership interest in a business. So the words or managerial at sub 10 to 5.06.040 would come out, and then the final sentence of that same, number 10, beginning with the words, "A managerial interest shall be deemed to exist, blah, 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 blah," that that would simply come out.
You should be an attorney.
I like it when you talk about that.
But would that work for you, Jim?
Yeah.
Brilliant fix.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So tell me what, what we're supposed to do now to get this done.
If that works, then what we can do is we can introduce the ordinance as amended.
As amended.
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
May I comment briefly before?
Yep.
Sure.
I just wanted to also thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your work on this issue and for getting this on the agenda. I think we're all aware that this is a huge public health threat, and we've seen the explosion of vaping among the youth. Ms. Garrity held up for us a bag of Juul pods that were collected at Redwood High School, and Dr. Ma may be able to back me up on this. My understanding is that each Juul pod contains the same amount of nicotine as an entire pack of cigarettes. So that is a ton of nicotine being consumed by our youth. And this is an ordinance that it's so easy to feel good about because it's, I think, really an important step towards fulfilling our duty to protect public health. So thanks again, Bob. And I also want to thank Rebecca for a fantastic staff report. It was really well-written, very organized, and your investigatory work after finding out about those citations, which I know I did not, I did not realize that we had had, you know, a recent history of, of transgressions in town. That was really helpful. So thank you as well.
Eli, thank you, and I think you hit it right on the head. This is a public health issue. Huge. And we can really take a step forward here. So is there any further discussion or is there a motion to?
The motion is to introduce ordinance number 983 as amended and waive further reading.
Second.
May I ask that we take a two-minute, a two-minute break for a moment before you take a?
May I have the cookies?
Yes, toss them down.
I apologize.
I also, I also want, I mean, go ahead, do, go to work, go to work on that.
We're going to take a two-minute break. After that brief break, and I guess I will go to the town attorney who.
I'm comfortable with the motion. The, the issue that I was thinking might be an inconsistency has been resolved, so I'm comfortable with the motion.
Okay, thank you. So now we're taking a vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt?
My yes is in memory of my mom, who passed in October over a multiple, multitude of tobacco illnesses.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Ravasia?
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you for all the public comments. We will now move on to item. We will now move on to item 6A. Update to council regarding observations from the northbound Sanford at Casa Buena trial closure. Request for direction to staff to make minor adjustments to plan, specifications, and cost estimate based on suggested intersection improvements.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, yeah, so we're back again with our Sanford intersection. Last meeting, couple of weeks ago, we went over in-depth the plans and the specs and what they're proposing to do. And we decided to do a trial closure for last Monday and Tuesday. So this was the results and our observations as a result of that trial closure on Sanford. Uh, so we did a 7:00 AM on Monday morning, closure of northbound Sanford, as you can see in the picture on the right. And that held through all the way to Tuesday, the following day, at 6:00 PM. So we captured four peak hours of that, of that closed northbound Sanford movement. We noted a few behaviors, and those are identified at the back of the staff report you have in front of you. So what I'm gonna do is kind of categorize this with respect to those listed behaviors and some suggested improvements that were going along with those. There really aren't large-ticket items. We noticed some slight changes that we would, that we're proposing to, to amend to the drawings, and, and that's what I'm presenting here. So behavior one that we noticed was probably, in our opinion, the most prominent and warrants looking into, and that's, vehicles were going around the closure and going the wrong way on Sanford southbound. So that, we feel, what we did on, on scene was we, we pulled the cones, tapered the, the corner over a little bit, as you can see with the red curb line there. But we're suggesting really modifying that curb line in the drawings for the final improvement to try to discourage people driving the wrong way there, as well as the no right-hand turn coming to westbound motorists on Meadow Suite. And then there's a, a do-not-enter right between the southbound movement and the bike lane slip. So those are a few things that are noteworthy. Also, as part of this closure was the stop control northbound Conno at Casa Buena. And that, that was, it brought to attention some sightline issues. Here, you can see in the pictures to the right, proposing to discuss with the, the dealerships, pulling back the, the vehicles to keep them out of the, the line of sight for a car coming up to the intersection. So you can kind of see top and bottom. And then as well, looking westbound, you can see the, the storage for a loading vehicle, or unloading vehicle for dealerships, parking up against the, the curb on Casa Buena. But we're looking at changing that location for storage to happen on Conno, to get it out of the sightline there. The third behavior that we noted was vehicles going, cutting through the Bank of America, which is just west of the Sanford intersection. It, it is pretty clear that that's a exit-only, in our opinion, but maybe some do-not-enter signs there to, to help notify people coming up. However, it is, it is,
And it's an entry-only at the other end of it, too, right?
It is, correct. So they, yeah, broke, broke it twice, I guess. But yeah, mostly, this was a learning curve. People were, were doing this out of confusion, we, we believe, on day one of the, of the closure. And then we saw less and less of this happening on the, you know, as the day one progressed and on the second day. It was also noted through the Pete's parking lot. But that wasn't a one-way only, it's just how people got around right through there. Uh, and then the, the fourth behavior, which ended up not really being a, a big issue, is just something we noticed in, in the, in the field that, hey, this is something we want to think about. Large vehicles are having trouble turning from Sanford onto Meadow Suite. It was more of the nature of our closure that we conducted. We had the barricades out for visibility in, into Meadow Suite a little bit. It just restricted that turning radius. I went back and looked at the drawings, and, and we have a new crosswalk, a new ped crossing that's going right where those barricades are. And that, and, and that clears out that whole area for cars to turn. There's a splitting island between Sanford northbound and the bike, or the Sanford southbound and the bike lane. And that splitting island ends several feet behind the barricade location. So no changes to the design, it was, it was worthy of, of looking into, though. So what we did notice, we, we put a, a traffic counter out on Conno, and we were able to actually count some vehicles. And, and we, we concluded that people were headed over to Conno, which is what we were anticipating. Additional northbound cars during the peak hour resulted in 38 cars per hour additional. So take that for what it's worth. It's, you know, that's one car every 90 seconds-ish additional. So that's the change that we're talking about. Southbound, we, we predicted not really much of a change because the southbound Sanford is still open. And that's more or less what we observed. It was a little bit scattered data, but we got some, some cases where there are a few cars additional during peak hours and some cases where there were less during the peak hour. So regardless, some, some low-volume changes is, is what that resulted in. So in conclusion, we're, we're, again, reiterating the project was, you know, designed how we intended and improves safety overall. The trial closure was successfully demonstrating that there really is a minor impact to overall existing circulation, as well as people were starting to be wise to the, the closure. And there were less U-turns and cutting through. Just in general, people adjusted well on the day two of the closure, we noted. And if otherwise, the, the final tweaks that we have, we could, we could have those wrapped up and done next week and then proceed with going out to bid in March. So, yeah, that's what, uh, that's what we found out from our trial closure.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council?
Yes.
Did you have any questions from neighbors that are, you would consider unresolved at this point?
So we did have some concerned citizens come out during the closure and after the closure. We, we, we spoke with, with them. I hope that their concerns are resolved. There were some, some good input that we gathered on multiple occasions. There was just a little bit more of, of discussion about what our intent was, what we were doing. I think that that was not exactly clear to, to several, so it was, it was good to have that dialogue. And I think that we were able to explain ourselves.
Any questions or? I just had a quick one. In the last meeting, we talked about this. We'd said that this was the most dangerous intersection in town. Do we have any data or information?
Yeah, yeah, so we, Peter and I, just before the meeting tonight, actually rounded up a few data sets that we have, and, and Peter's passing it out right now. Peter, you wanna touch on this?
Yeah, thanks, Jared, and Mayor Ravazio. This handout is available at the back of the, for members of the public that are interested. But I wanted to kind of go through some of the data, both in terms of 10-year and five-year collision record, types of collision and location. So the first, the first map that we can look at is, is the scatter plot of where all the intersection, excuse me, all the collisions are in town. It looks like this. And you can tell, the one place you don't want to be in Corte Madera is on US 101. That is where more than 50% of the collisions within the town limits occur. So avoid 101, and you'll live longer, most likely. But then if you, if you turn to specific intersections, you can see through this cluster plot that, that Madera, Tamalpais, Sanford intersection is, has the largest cluster. Interestingly, here at Willow and Tamalpais, we also have a large number. But this really does show the corridors and the, and the intersections that, that we need to pay attention to. And for those of you who aren't looking at this map, those corridors are Tamalpais, Tamal Vista, and Paradise. Those are our three primary corridors. Turning to the next map.
Peter, before you go on, what does it stand for? SWITRSGIS, man?
This is the statewide integrated traffic, something or other.
The only thing I was trying to get at, it's, it's published by who? Like, who, who does it?
Oh, so, so Mr. Cusamano and all of his, and Chief Norton, they're required to submit all of their police records. So it's a statewide database for collision record.
Okay, got it.
So it's all the police reports that go in. We just call it SWITRS, but yeah. So the next map has a little more data in it. It's the one that has the pins that are dropped in it, if you're looking at the ones that have pins. So Mayor Ravazio's question was, you know, how many? Well, 22 is the pin dropped at this location, at Meadow Suite, Casa Buena, Sanford. There's two really high-level collision locations at Pfeiffer in Tamal Vista and Warrnambool in Tamal Vista. Those are 19 collisions at those locations. And then you can see the rest of the numbers. At the top, I'll also point you to the total collisions. Again, you can see 437 in town and 569 injuries of, of those. The state highway had 55%. You can see the motorcycle, the bicycle, and the ped collisions. And of course, the rest are vehicle collisions. And then the last one that I quickly printed out for you was the type of collision in a bar chart. So we find that traffic engineering tends to solve a lot of the rear-end collision problems. And I think for, in this particular case, the rear-end collisions we have is that left-turn movement. So people are going, they're paying attention, it's their turn. All of a sudden, the car in front of them stops at Sanford because they're not sure if the person is gonna go or stay clear. And we get rear-end collisions, which don't tend to be fatal, but they're pretty annoying. And then the rest of the collision types, hit object, broadside state, sideswipe, et cetera, are listed as well. So I think we talked about eight collisions over a five-year period, 22 over the 10-year period, but this is our intersection that's leading the way.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Then we will open it up for public comment. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this issue? Please come to the microphone and state your name and where you're from. That'd be helpful.
Okay, my name is Kathy Haas, and I live on Meadow Suite, close to Canal. And I still have, they were wonderful. Peter and Jared spent time with me and went over. Is there something wrong?
No, I was just,
Oh.
She says start timer, sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, you,
Okay, sorry, we're just trying to keep them to three minutes, so.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, that's fine, I can say it because I've sent you an email with my concerns. They were wonderful, spent time, went over the whole project with me. But I still have concerns. I drive, we've been there for many, many years. We have a house, we have renters on the street on Meadow Suite, and been there over 40 years. And I'll start with just driving east at the library. That old exit coming out of the library is a problem that you cannot see when you're driving, and I'm used to it, so I stop. But people coming out don't. There are lots of cars, it's a narrow street on Meadow Suite, the, right after the library. And then going down the street, and I, I said this in the email to you also, that coming down from south to north, the hill, when they get to the bottom where Canal and Meadow Suite, if they're going to go onto Meadow Suite to make that left, they cut the corner. And I know that Jared said that they are putting a line in there, but it just doesn't even seem to be wide enough. Another thing is the trucks that are gonna move over to Canal, which that's where they were before, is it's gonna be tough with all the cars there. And again, when you get to Canal and Casa Buena, that left turn, the sightline is off. Even now, even, and I guess he saw, he knew that there was a big truck park there the day of the test, and so that was one thing. Another thing is turning right there, going past Marin Joes. Even now, if you want to go on I-101 South, you're still, you have to go past Marin Joes where you have to go into the lanes where cars are coming. That's how, because they're all double-parked there during the dinner hour. So I ain't just saying, and then also, and I think that the town is aware at Canal and Casa Buena where that met, that there is a problem there because of the mirrors you put up several years ago. Not even several, just a few years ago. And that didn't work either. So the sightlines, I don't know if, how it can be corrected or, or whatever. I know that that's a help, but I'm not sure that that's the answer. I just want my concerns in the record. I've been there 40 years and drive on the street, and I don't think, I don't know, you're laughing or something, I don't know. Do you think it's funny, or?
No, no, I'm sorry.
I mean, these are real concerns, if you, anyway, so there, you have my thoughts on it.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry if you, I, I was just smiling because you had, I thought you were smiling, so. I'm sorry, I apologize. Anybody else?
David McPherson, Corte Madera Avenue. I've been interested in this intersection for a long time. One, because I was one of the statistics. A car stopped in front of me, I stopped before I went into the back of him. I was hit by a truck, the airbag went off, broke my thumb. And I drove away, so I'd never reported that to the Central Memphis Police. So that would've been one more,
Oh, had one, 23.
Accident at that intersection. And of course, being part of the B-PAC and cycling in the area, too, and my daughter going to the, the library on a bicycle. I, I would love the idea of the improved circulation for pedestrians and bicycles. I went on three different occasions to go through the intersection myself. There were obvious limitations, as Jared explained. Before I arrived, with, with the type of barricades they had to use and, and frankly, if it had been a longer test with more sophisticated barricades, more sophisticated signs, I think some of the issues that were apparent would have even been alleviated. And I think the final design will address that and eliminate anyone trying to go around it and going the wrong way. And the final comment I had is just an additional compliment about the video, the ability for citizens to watch the video. And I'm wondering, it may be adding too much time on your already crowded agendas, but I wonder if there's any way in the future that citizens watching, who aren't able to come, as I was able to just shoot down and come, could submit a question or two or a comment based upon what they have seen. And the clerk would be able to read those online and determine if any of them were issues that were not brought up by members of the public. Just something to think about, just because of being able to sit at home and watch it on,
Like forum with Michael Krasny, is that what you're?
Yeah, it's, it's exactly kind of the same thing. But, you know, obviously, you wouldn't have people phoning in. But it, but they do definitely take comments via email after they've heard a presentation. And sometimes that adds to it, and obviously, we have a generation that they may not be able to get out as easily as, as I can. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this? Okay, hearing none, we will close public comment, and we will bring it back to the council for discussion. And we are not making a motion on this. This, we are just gonna provide direction, so. Right?
Is that right?
Yeah, that's,
I thought we, we all but passed it the last time.
Yeah.
No, we recommend,
Just confirm. Review and discuss observations.
It says, "Receive update and provide direction to staff."
Finish the plans.
Yeah, so the proposed changes that we discussed to accept, that those should be incorporated into the final set of plans.
Okay. Jim, go ahead.
Uh, one, I was over there at about 5:00 on Monday afternoon. Think you were hiding behind a post, your dog and your bicycle, okay? I pulled over just before the library and counted at least three cars cutting through parking lots. Two went through Pete's, one went through the Brown Professional Buildings parking lot. So I think down the line, we're gonna have to get ready to address that issue when the property owners raise the issue with us. The other point is item two, confusion at Conno and Casa Buena. Since we're reworking roadway and everything, could we make that a three-way stop?
So, yeah, that had come up in, in discussions, and it comes down to warrants, whether there's volumes there.
Couldn't we say the sightline is sufficiently impaired that increasing traffic might cause issues?
We, we could look at it, I would definitely look at it, absolutely.
Councilmember Andrews, what I would, what I would suggest is,
Congressman Andrews, what I would suggest is, because we don't meet the warrants currently, we can implement the project as it is and maximize the sight line by bringing the stop bar as far forward as possible, much further than the yield bar is now, and putting drivers in the best position to look both left and right. I think that the only way to make the warrants and to make that a three-way stop would be if we had either a volume change or a collision change. I think on the map I gave you, you may show one collision there at a 10-year location. We just, we wouldn't be able to justify that. So the California Vehicle Code dictates that we need 240 vehicles on average in an hour. And I think when Jared and I looked at the counts, we were looking at 40 to 80 vehicles in the peak hours here. So I guess the short answer is, and Todd can speak more to this from an enforcement standpoint, if we don't have warrants or justification and we put them in, we have a difficult time enforcing those. In other words, if someone doesn't come to a stop and we write them a ticket, they can contest it and get out of it, so.
My only concern is when pulling up there and getting ready to do a left turn, given the way the road curves back that way, looking up the hill is the pillar between my passenger seat and the rear passenger seat. And I suspect a lot of cars that have that, so just from a sight line safety issue, you know, maybe a stop sign heading north on Casabuena, but it just...
I want to put one in there, but I don't know that we can justify it from meeting the vehicle code and enforceability. But I do think that...
Let me put another question to you.
Yeah.
When's the next time you measure, and how many car tracks do you need over there?
Well, the nice thing is, Todd and I got together a few months ago. We purchased our own vehicle counting device that counts vehicles, direction, total speed every 15 minutes, 85th percentile. We can put that up anytime. It has to be a random survey. We can't announce it to you and everyone else, but we can do a new traffic count there.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, as Peter mentioned at the last meeting, you know, this is something we're looking at closely. We're monitoring. We feel like we can improve the sight lines with the adjustments and we'll be okay, but it's something we're going to monitor, and if we have to, the next step will be stop signs. And if we have to, we will absolutely report to you.
I'm just concerned that once we shift the moms picking kids up at the library into a loop, that, you know, the risk goes out that anyway.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Sloan, anything?
I've got a question. I saw, at least I think I saw in one of your plans, there a stronger no right turn sign up. Was that an indication that the plans are going to change and there's a new sign that is going in there?
That was a suggestion, yes, to put in a no right-hand turn for eastbound, westbound Meadows Suite vehicles.
Right. And I was just wondering whether there's any use in having, let's say, temporary instruction signs. Once the construction is done, you're going to have a new condition, and just having some temporary signs there that make it crystal clear, no way, don't go down this way, that would go beyond what you need in the long run, but it would be possibly useful in the short run for instruction and redirection of folks.
So during construction, you're saying?
Yeah, well, certainly during construction. You know, hey, there's a way out of here by going over to Lakeside.
Just hopefully then you wouldn't have people, once the sign disappears, that think, oh, now I can make a right turn.
Yeah, well...
Yeah, we can look into that, absolutely.
Okay. No, it's a tough, unique little intersection, and it needs to be fixed.
Can I just say thank you to our Public Works Department for conducting this trial closure? And it's very heartening to see changes made in response to the actual observations from the closure, because I think that speaks to a lot of residents' concerns, that we are looking at the actual impacts of this project and adjusting what we're doing accordingly. I know I feel really good that this happened and that we're adjusting based on what we saw, so thank you.
And I would echo that. I'm glad to see, I drove through it, I think it was Monday morning or before 9:00, and you know, it was amazingly working well. I mean, you know, I know we were all really concerned about it and, you know, worried about what was going to happen. And, well, I understand your concerns about the changes, but we have to do something. We have to make an improvement there because it is clearly an issue. And I think the changes that we're talking about, while it's going to be uncomfortable for a while, is ultimately going to be a big improvement and an increase in safety for the public and the town. And I think I would go ahead and move forward with the changes you were suggesting making. That would be my direction as well. Any further? No? Okay. And I guess we are done with that item then, and we will move on to Town Manager and Council Reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just to, a couple of quick updates. On Friday, we had the kickoff to our Climate Adaptation Plan, and Peter and the team started that process, and so we're excited about that. And as you stated at the last meeting, it's probably the most important venture and legacy that we will leave future generations. So we're really excited to get that going, and Peter and his team are doing a great job. I attended the statewide managers' conference last week in San Diego. It's interesting, I shared with the town attorney, she told me to use my inside voice and not outside with the other managers, but really some of the issues that they're facing in the state, it just makes me appreciate where I work. And my definition of a quality of life issue isn't necessarily their definition, so that was pretty remarkable. As your second year as a manager, I've taken more of a statewide approach of really trying to be part of some things that are important to our town. And hopefully, I will be able to join the Sales Tax Committee of Managers and State Legislators moving forward, and so to make sure we have a voice as we're heavily impacted on sales tax revenue.
That would be great, Todd.
And the other one that we were a part of, which I'm proud of, is the City Managers' Department Pension Sustainability Working Group. There's a white paper. We're going to put it on the website, but some of the forward-thinking, outside-the-box type of ideas available in the state outside of new legislation or changes by the courts were changing the service delivery model of using JPAs and police and fire, starting a pension stabilization trust.
Wait, they were pro JPAs or anti JPAs?
Pro. It's one of the recommendations, it's a best practice. And so it's finally starting to get some, you know, at least on the police side, they're starting to talk about it at the state level. And the other one was the employee cost sharing with pensions. And so again, our employees pay 50% of the employer's cost of CalPERS. And so it was nice to see in the best practices, we are completing three of the four recommendations. It's, I'll put it on the website and I'll send it to the council if you are bored and want to read. But the good news is we're following a lot of the best practices. And also, we, I had Lorena attend with me, our administrative analyst, as you know. She hopes to be a city manager someday, which is shocking at her age that she wants to do that, but she really, she had a great time, made a lot of contacts, and I think it's going to make her better in supporting me for sure and Rebecca. So we had a great time in San Diego, so thank you.
So she wants to be a city manager, and do we offer psychological care?
She couldn't learn from anyone better than you guys.
Did it? Thank you, Todd. Council reports.
Couple of things on transportation front and environmental front. First of all, my spouse and I took our first ride on the Smart Train on Sunday up to a very pleasant lunch in downtown Petaluma, seeing all the wetlands between here and there. Six, no fewer than six pair of swans between North San Rafael and Petaluma on various water bodies. A lot of water beside the train, but I recommend it. It's very, it's more sophisticated in its total operation than I had thought. And I know that Phil, I believe that Phil, one of our senior planner, rides it on a regular basis. The TAM is still moving forward to launch its portion of an EV infrastructure plan, and I would point out that our sister city of, or sister town of San Anselmo has just adopted in the last week an EV infrastructure plan. It's really pretty exciting and comprehensive, and it's on their website. And I'm hoping that at some point in the not-too-distant future, we could look into imitating that good leadership behavior. Drive Clean Marin is a big part of that. In TAM itself, upcoming this spring will be the beginning of the on-ramp metering project on 101. For reasons that I don't fully appreciate, they're going to start on 101 northbound entryways, including our own entryways. And there will be some construction, in some cases widening from one lane to two lanes onbound, and then metering. And this increases the flow of everybody that's on 101 if you release vehicles in a more measured fashion. So that test is going to begin construction. I think they're going to begin in Sausalito and come north, but I'm not even certain of that. Route 37, once again, was blocked by floods, and as it was two years ago. And so the planning effort and environmental and planning effort to raise the levees and raise the western segment of Route, State Route 37 have become all the more urgent. The Yellow Best Program is better funded now after Measure AA passed, and that is advancing. And action is likely by the end of this month to make sure that each of our jurisdictions that's participating in that will be funded. I would say lookout for the future, another item in the future is this push by the folks in the Building Decarbonization Coalition to remove natural gas from all buildings in the state. And second to last thing, if anybody didn't see this article in the New York Times this Sunday, I would urge you to take a look at it. It's just a sweeping summary of where we stand right now and what, how we might benefit from feeling a little bit more urgency on the issue, but...
On what, David?
On the issue of climate change.
Oh, got it.
And it's a very well-written little thing. So Dr. Peter Joseph and I are going to be giving a presentation for two hours on this Saturday morning at Book Passage, 10 to 12. It's free on the topic of what to do about climate change. And I am very, very happy that we have initiated our Adaptation Advisory Committee, and I think the consultant team looks to be really on target and just the right kinds of people who've done this work before. So it's great. Good work.
Thank you. Eli?
Thank you. On the CMSA front, we've got a little good news and a little bad news. So the good news is that the agency once again met or exceeded all of its target performance metrics last year. So Jason Dow continues to run a very tight ship over there, and CMSA, I think, is an impressive organization, doing very well. The bad news is that the state revolving water fund grant that we, or state water revolving, I don't know, a grant that we were looking for to help fund our cogenerator engine program fell through, apparently, so we did not, I guess, score high enough in order to achieve that grant. So that was a disappointment, but it doesn't look like it's going to set back the entire program. We have other sort of capital funds that we can certainly expend for that purpose, and I think we all remain committed to getting a new cogeneration engine up and running to produce electricity from our biogas. And then on the LCM, the Luxor-Corvina School District front, not much to report. I just had a nice meeting with Catherine Chan a couple of weeks ago, who is one of the newly elected trustees, so building a new relationship there. I understand that she is the school board's liaison to the town council, so we'll be working together in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sloan?
The only meeting I attended on behalf of the town in the last couple of weeks was the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, which passed its annual budget and appears to be doing swimmingly.
Thank you. Jim? Nothing to report? Nothing. Two things I forgot to report last time on Coffee with the Mayor.
How'd that go? How many people showed up?
We had about a half dozen people come through in about an hour and a half, and it was great. I mean, I think it's an indication that the town is really, really running well because everybody came and were, you know, while they had questions, you know, the questions, there were some questions about cannabis legalization and potholes. But I mean, in general, everybody was happy and, you know, positive and, you know, we may want to think about doing a coffee with a council member. And we don't want to talk about it now, but just think about it. It's not a bad idea. It's a good way to...
Dennis Ordonez, who keeps talking about wanting to do one with you, frankly.
Okay. I'm supposed to talk to him tomorrow, so I'll ask him about it. And I also attended the Climate Adaptation Meeting on Friday and was also just really impressed with the consultants, but also our own staff. The consultants who were there, the meeting was at 1:00 in the afternoon, the consultants at 7:00 AM went on a kayak tour of the bay and the marshfront with Bob Bundy. And then they came, and Bundy told, I saw Bundy this morning, and he told me, he's on the flood control board, it is the third time he's gone out on a kayak since Peter Brown has taken over as Director of Public Works. And so he is extremely impressed, as am I, that, you know, obviously, this is being taken really seriously and, you know, you know, we're going to move forward with a lot of caution, but also intelligence on this whole thing. So I was just really pleased with the way the whole thing went. I thought it was great, really positive. And that's all I have to report. Then we move on to Review of Draft Agenda, 8A.
Rebecca's got her hand up.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Vazio. Our town attorney...
What is up with you?
...just pointed out to me that it may have been worthwhile to indicate or at least mention to you that we are scheduled to do our every-two-years update of our AB-1234 ethics training. So I will be agendizing that as a special meeting, since we are including other boards and commissions at this as well, and we'll have a quorum of each of our boards and commissions. But that is from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on March 5.
Have you sent a calendar invite out, or if you have not, could you do that?
Yes.
March what? 6th?
5th.
5th.
It's prior to our next town council meeting.
Oh, it is.
You will...
I thought, last time it was in like, like in the middle of the, it lasted a long time.
It was, it was. It was like at 9:00 in the morning.
Yes. So you can squeeze in in two hours or something? How long?
It, you're, two hours is the requirement.
When does it commence? So 3:00 or something like?
4:00.
4:00 on the 5th?
You may take it online, but our town attorney has assured us this will be interesting and informative, and you do, you learn a lot by attending, attending the class with...
I love cookies. Does she dangle?
I will say that I can promise you it will be more entertaining than the online version. The bar is not very high with the...
Do you do yo-yo tricks?
I can attempt yo-yo. It is more engaging, and there is an interactive component that I think will make it maybe more interesting.
The online is looking better and better.
Oh, come on.
Also, the educational component is that you do learn a lot from the other attendees and the questions that they ask that you may not have thought to ask, or, yes, it's very important.
Anyway, okay, thank you. Then we can move on to any comments or questions on our next agenda. Okay? Then hearing none, we will adjourn to closed session.
We have a closed session?
We do.
We have a closed session?
Public comment on closed session?
What's that?
Public comment on the closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Is there any public comment on the closed session? Okay, hearing none, then we will adjourn to closed session.
Would anybody know what to comment on?